Ongoing transparency, Hastings Public Schools will provide an annual report each fall to our NAIPAC detailing the total amount received from the Permanent School Fund. In addition, we will share information about how these and other funds are used to support Native American students. Any questions on that one? All right, this is also an action item later in the individual, as an individual item.
All right, next on our agenda, we have the 2025-26 Tahoe contract renewal.
And we have Brittany with us tonight to speak to that. Thank you.
So I am here to talk a little bit more about the Tahoe contract. Oh, this way, better. I talk soft, too, which doesn't help, so. Okay, so we're good?
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a way to click through? Oh. Thank you. All right. So the first one that I'm going to be talking about is I just want to make sure that everyone understands that my program is a fund too, so it has no impact at all on the general fund. Some of the reasons to keep the contract with Tahoe is the terms and conditions, we have an onsite chef, which has been fantastic, going through helping me with menu planning, recipes, grocery procurement, we're having access to Tahoe vendor contracts and pricing, which we take the time to try to see if ours is more cost-effective versus theirs, so I kind of go back and forth between the two, to be honest. We also have some specialty menu items that Tahoe creates, they're dietitian-approved, they're great for the National School Lunch Program. Right now, I know the, they have like a bunch of chefs, like corporate chefs, that will go, and right now they're in China, coming, and they're going to be coming back and bringing some different things that they've learned over there and maybe being able to incorporate that next year. They also do a harvest of the month and menu item sampling. And our chef also will go out to the buildings and they, and he does a wonderful job of doing some training and support. He's helped staff with questions on like measuring, conversions, just cutting fruit and what's the quickest and most cost-effective way to do that type of thing. The first year that we had Tahoe that we brought in, we spent $93,750. The second year was $125,000, and we're looking at potentially this next year at $135,000. And we're evaluating the contract on a yearly basis, based on the program goals and our financial sustainability on that. This right here is just some of the program enhancements that we've done. This kind of showcases, when Chef Mike is here, this is just a calendar of what he does in April, so as you can see, there's a lot of prepping that's done because the items that we are doing right now, when we're doing all this stuff, is made from scratch, and that means he's not going out and just buying frozen stuff, he's actually going and we're getting fresh fruits, fresh vegetables, we're making those, dicing them, chopping them, he's doing all that himself. So a lot of this stuff is in addition to what my staff currently does, so he's taking and trying to make the program a little bit to the next level and helping the staff do that. So as you can see, we're doing like a lot of sampling, so the queso chicken and Spanish rice was fantastic and very good this last month, and we went and sampled that, and he was at every single one of the buildings, just so that we could see how it went over, went over really, really well at the high school and the middle school, the little kids, we toned it down a little bit, but they still thought it was a little spicy, so there's that. But, so it's a, it's a process, just trying to figure out what the kids like and what they don't like. And you can see, too, that we're doing a spaghetti squash carbonero with chicken, and that's towards the end of this month at the middle school. And then next month, again, just kind of highlight some of the different things that he's doing and some of the different sampling. Our sampling, what we're trying to do with the sampling is we're trying to get it out to kids so that they can see what it is, they can taste it, they know what it is, and then we try to put it on the menu the following month, so that we can maybe incorporate in that, into the menu going forward. The benefits of a partnership, again, it's Chef Mike and myself, we both get training from corporate chefs, he more so than myself, but we're getting that corporate chef, you know, like the trip to Chinese, China, and them coming back and giving us new menus and things like that. There's lots of resources, so we're getting resources from dietitians, plus just any and all resources that Tahoe has. They do regulation changes, for example, this year, we're looking, this upcoming year, we're looking at lower sugar and lower sodium coming into, into play. We have access to other districts around and part of Tahoe's group, and then we have menu planning that we do. So we do a lot of made from scratch this year also, so that goes into some of the menu planning that we've been doing, so those are just some examples. And then there's also a picture, that was the honey garlic chicken that he did. So we've, we've added some, those are just some of the key ones that we, we tried, some of them went over well, some of them don't, but the nice thing is, is even if we have 100 kids try it, there's 100 kids that just tried something new. So that's what our goal is, is trying to really make sure that kids are trying something new, and again, these are all made from scratch recipes. I'm looking for a one-year, and I'm recommending a one-year contract with Tahoe, again, the biggest reason is because of the uncertainty around the longevity of the free meals, so we're trying to make all the changes, you know, one year at a time. Some of the changes that I've currently made is dishwashers at all sites, we did an MOU to increase the hours for staff, and then the Tahoe contract with the focus on breakfast for next year, based on recent survey results. Any questions, or?
Director Zuzik.
Brittany, please talk about the relationship between Chef Mike and the line cooks at the different schools. How is it going? Is it, I'll just ask that open question.
Sure.
How is it going?
You know, to be honest, there's been some stumbling blocks, but we're working together, we're working as a team. Our biggest focus is we want to feed kids, and we want to give them new, new opportunities to try different things that maybe they're not able to try other places. So, you know, when you bring something, somebody in and, and they're new, I mean, I went through this myself, too, when I first came in five years ago, there's some learning and some, you know, different things and different personalities and everything that you have to, you have to work through. So I think now it's going pretty well, so.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Director Milner.
Can you give more detail on how they get to sample it? Like, obviously, that picture had little cups, like, are you first presenting it to the students in little sample sizes and just, here you go, anybody take them, or how, how does that happen?
Yep, so what we, what we do is, there's usually big shafing pans, so you know, like if you go to a buffet and they have little candles underneath them that keep it warm, we have big shaving pans that we bring out, and he's taking it and putting it into little cups, so that way kids can just come up, because again, depending upon what school it's at, it could be, if we're at the elementary schools, you know, we serve roughly 350 to 400 students in a couple hours, so they have to get through pretty fast and furious, and as soon as they see Chef Mike, or they see that staff is doing something different, all the kids are excited. So trying to get them through fast, so that they actually have a chance to sit down and eat, plus get that little sample. We have it big and then give them the little piece, so that they can just come up and grab a piece, and, and Chef Mike does a good job of talking, and my staff does a really good job of talking with the kids as they're coming through the line to grab things and, and try it, too. So, middle school and high school is a little bit different, because the kids are much better about coming up quickly and grabbing what they want, and again, we're still putting it in a little, just for convenience sake, they can come up and grab just a, a sample, but they're a little bit better at going through quicker.
And then, how do you get the feedback from them if that becomes a menu item the following month? Like, how do you know if it's a hit or not?
Again, it's staff going out and talking, it's also just kind of keeping an eye, you'd be amazed what you can find out by standing by the garbage can. So, you know, the little kids especially, because you never know what they're going to say, and you never know what their reaction's going to be, so it's just kind of watching to see what they're doing, and, and, you know, they might take a bite, and if they like it, they're like, ooh, and then you'll see them start eating it, and if they don't like it, then you see the face that they make, and you're like, okay, that's maybe, you know. So it's just kind of seeing, how much, how much do we end up with in the garbage can? How much are the kids liking it? And it's talking with the kids, too, at all ages, and again, I'm not doing it just so that we're getting all the main numbers, I'm trying to make it so that kids are also getting a chance to experience something different, too. So we're not staying with the processed foods, we're not staying with, you know, I mean, I could serve chicken nuggets every day at K through, you know, K through four, and they'd be happy, chicken nuggets and mac and cheese, and they'd be ecstatic every day. But let's try something a little different, too.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much for your, your time and the presentation.
Yep, thank you.
All right, and that's another item that we'll be voting on this evening. Next up, we have our rescind and amend resolution for the combined polling locations. Are you covering this?
There we go. All right. All right, so what Lyndi has up on the screen right now is the explanation, so the resolution establishing combined polling places for the 26 elections, which was approved during your January 6, 2025 meeting, contained an error, it was actually matched to the city, which is different from the school. So however, because the resolution was passed prior to the statutory deadline of December 31, '25, the school board retains the authority to rescind and correct, or rescind the incorrect resolution and adopt a revised accurate version. So this allows us to correct the record and ensure compliance with election regulations in a timely manner. So you will see then, you have two resolutions, there's the combined polling place, or the one to rescind, and then the establishing the combined polling place, which is the one that you expect.
Yeah, so to be clear, the proposal is to go to five combined polling places, which are the same as the last two or three odd-year elections.
Correct.
So, so folks can vote at the same place that they voted in those elections as well, so less confusion. All right, any questions on that? Okay. Next up, we have our school board representatives and committee reports. First up, we have District 917 with Director Zuzik.
Nothing more to add, other than the April notes from the board meeting, it's pretty self-explanatory, and, and you'll see that we are making significant budget reductions at 917.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, 917 and every other district in the state, right? All right, next up, we've got our AMSD update with Director Brunz.
Yeah, there was an update from legislators, and that included a lot of the information you would anticipate with the legislative session nearing its close, final budget items kind of appearing together, but interesting piece that was shared with the board, but I wanted to make sure it was for public digestion as well, was work from the Rockford Superintendent around addressing TRA or not addressing it, and with the financial pitfalls of that would be over the next nine years. And so if you want to get to the thesis statement of it all, there's an attached PowerPoint presentation that was shared, it's that copy of the fiscal on sustainability, and if you just go to the last slide and you look at the projections in nine years, I love some of the, the included clip art in this presentation, including financial cliff ahead. But the difference in addressing TRA, so, and, and not, it comes to the tune of 1.2 billion over the course of the next nine years. Not addressing it keeps your higher-range salaries, not higher range, but to say that they are furthest on your salary escalators, whether it's their wisdom and, and their experience and all those pieces tied together, but if they're able to leave the workforce through a reinstatement of something that looks like Rule of 90, those salaries start to leave and they enjoy retirement earlier on. So it's just interesting to take this in food for thought as the legislative session comes to a close.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, Director Zuzik?
Questioning clarification. Director Brunz, when I saw that presentation, because I too was on the same meeting, at the same meeting on, digitally on, or virtually, but it just, it just struck me that this is one of the biggest unintended consequences that I've seen in my career as a educational leader, that the cost down the road of not having Rule of 90 is a compelling deal, and, and it might not look exactly like Rule of 90, but hopefully through TRA, we can adjust that somehow.
Yeah, it's the solvency component over time, because on its face, year one, it doesn't feel that way, but if you give it longevity, then it does, and it carries its own weight.
Any other questions or comments? Hey, thank you. Next up, we've got our Community Collaboration Committee update with Director Milner.
Well, as has been mentioned earlier, we had three big meetings this month, and I too was hopeful that we would have many more participants, and so I agree with Ms. Sedeen that I wish there was more community, more parents, more involvement, because I found the information that was shared incredibly helpful, as a board member and a parent in this school. And so I'm going to highlight a couple things, but I obviously can't regurgitate six hours' worth of material, more or less, is what we went through, and I appreciate all the people that put all of the effort into everything that was presented, because I found it incredibly helpful, for sure. So the first one, on April 8th, was the strategic plan, and that was really great, because there was some interaction, we had some small group get-togethers, and, and the powerful thing, I think, is that everybody had sheets to write down their thoughts and suggestions, and those were gathered at the end of the evening, and between Dr. Champa and Lyndi and maybe someone else, I don't know, maybe just the two of you, somehow they showed up at the very next school board meeting with incredible data, put into wonderful, readable documents, and the, the new strategic plan was updated, and more work was done on that in somehow, less than 24 hours. So thank you, guys, for your hard work on that, that was incredible, and thank you for everybody who showed up to give your thoughts and your feedback. The second meeting was April 15th, and that one was budget adjustments, which Director Subert went through tonight, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but I'm very thankful for all the work you guys have been doing, this is not an easy task, and so we're very grateful for your openness and your willing to explain it again, and again, and again. It's super helpful for all of us to know exactly what's going on, and where the taxpayer dollars are going, and how we're spending wisely in this district. And last night's was the deep dive into the district's strategic anchors, and I am going to highlight a couple things, because I, I just was floored last night with some of the information we got. So Andrew Hodges, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Andy Larson, Curriculum Coordinator, talked about the READ Act, Gifted and Talented Programming Pathways, and one of the things that was highlighted is READ Act, which we talked about tonight as well, too, and they gave a very promising presentation of the READ Act, and how our school is a leader in implementation of the new curriculum and evidence-based training in the science of reading. Our teachers and staff have been working incredibly hard, and the accelerated growth of our students is a shining example of all of the hard work they've been doing. Mr. Estrabee mentioned that tonight as well, too, that there are other districts coming here to learn from us, so I just think an applause for everyone and their hard work, we get it. I mean, I have many friends in the district that are telling me how hard they've been working, and like he said, constant learning and also trying to teach at the same time, that's more than a full-time job, that's, that's a lot of work, and so it's just super exciting to see that we've become a leader in that, and how hard everybody's been working, but also the success of our students. That's just, I, I can't even tell you how exciting that is for me. I'm going to actually skip down to pathways and just put that, I think for a lot of students, hands-on learning and the ability to really put into practice what you're learning, and see, hey, is this what I want to do for the rest of my life, is super, super impressive. And so that's where the Pathways program is, and I'm not going to read to you the four categories, but I've got it listed there. But also a question that I get a lot of times when people are asking me about this, is, well, if you get into one pathway, then could you, like, still go somewhere else? And the answer to that is yes. So I don't want parents to think, like, oh, once you head down one, you're kind of stuck in that. There's still a lot of options for parents or for kids, and it just allows them that chance to check out, reach your career goals and what feels right to me, before you get to college and spend a lot of money, or, you know, any two-year education or anything like that. So I think the, the work we've done in pathways is also incredibly exciting, and thank you for all of the people that have been working really, really hard on that. I think that's just really powerful for our students. Effective Operations was presented by Brent Anderson, Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, and something that was really impressive to me on that is, safety and security is one of the number one priorities that was brought up from the annual survey from parents who responded, and it was mentioned tonight that the work in this district is alive, I jotted that down after it was mentioned. His presentation was definitely clarity on that, that there is stuff alive and working behind the scenes that we don't even know, as parents as well. And so, like, such things as, as panic buttons and security cameras going up, and the change in the cell phone policy, how much that has changed safety and behavior in our students. Also, one thing that I found interesting last night was this middle school hall monitoring system, where if you're given a hall pass, and let's say Student A and Student B don't typically get along when they get in the same hallway together, well, we don't give them a hall pass at the same time. The technology is there to help protect our students and keep everybody safe. And before I ran for school board, that was definitely one of the things that was a huge concern in this community, is just continued bullying, and why do these situations keep coming up and coming up? Can't we stop that? We have lots of things happening to prevent those things from occurring over and over, and I'm just super excited to hear about that as well, too. So thank you to Brent for putting that presentation together and showing us all of the things happening in our district. And then lastly was the School Perception Survey that was given by Dr. Tammy Champa. And the thing I'd like to highlight there, there's information there to read, I'm not going to read all of that, but the biggest thing is the participation rate. This information has been used with incredible intentionality. There have been changes made in our district in all sorts of categories because of the information we get back from parents, staff, and students. So next year, when the survey rolls around, however it is that we get that information out to you and repeat, and, you know, please take this survey, I urge anyone to take this survey, because that information is used in very important manners. So just to kind of highlight that and make sure that our participation rates go up, because that is how you are heard in this district, is by participating in things like this. So please, please, parents, staff, and students, keep, keep giving us your feedback on School Perception Survey. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I do want to add, so yes, we had four community members attend last night, plus our appointed board member, who isn't seated yet, and I will say, three of them afterwards, the one who had to rush out, he was rushing to archery practice, where I saw him later, he was one of the three, but the, I had three out of the five mention to me how unbelievably invaluable that information was last night, and how fantastic it was, and how they all wished more people were there to hear it, and asking, how do we get more parents to show up to this stuff? And so I think, you know, I, I think we do, we need to get creative. My, my goal is to have to use the, the high school auditorium for events like that, right? To get, to pack the room and get so many people involved. So yeah, I think that that is a challenge that we definitely have with getting more, but I think that, you know, the information was fantastic, and it was very well-received, and I, I think it's, it's exciting to hear all those things, even, you know, I knew, I knew the things that are going on, but it's still exciting to hear it and, and everything, so. Any other questions, comments, or Director Zuzik? Just trigger happy, all right? Okay. Moving on, we've got our Joint Powers, Facilities, and Finance Committee, and that is Director Zuzik.
So as a reminder, we combined three different subcommittees, we combined Joint Powers, Facilities, and Finance Committee meeting, or committees together, and so there was a Joint Powers meeting that was really important, because we talked about the, about the challenges and the opportunities related to partnerships between the City of Hastings and Hastings Public Schools, and there's a couple of things that are really top of mind, and one of them is some work at the ICE Arena, and, and the other one is the, the financial solvability, or, the financial health of the Senior Citizen Center, and whether or not we can continue to keep doing what we're doing, and it, those two things are really of importance, both of them, and I appreciated that Dr. Champa said that she wants some full-board discussion and full-board direction from the, from all of us regarding the collaboration with the city, and I think that that's going to be really important, and I hope that we can schedule it at the very next work session, or whenever, as soon as possible. But you'll see the minutes, they're, they're pretty straightforward. We were working on four different documents to make sure that the partnership is strong as we move forward from here, and we've got two meetings coming up, one is on, actually one meeting is coming up, and that's on June 20th, and, and that'll be our next Joint Powers meeting. The other meeting that we had was a facilities meeting, and Director Scott Stockdale and Brent Anderson were there to talk about the facilities in Hastings Public Schools, and, and how all of that is going, and the highlight of the meeting was a review of the first year of the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan, or LTFM, and my expectation is that every year, we'll have at least one meeting to review the, the next year of LTFM, because it's just going to keep rolling forward, and then also, whenever it's important to call our attention to, to more issues, or anything that comes up, then Director Stockdale or the board could call a meeting and say, hey, we want to hear more about X related to facilities, but what really was compelling to me was the detail in that plan, and how well-organized it was, how thoughtful it was, how, how planful it was, and, and he, he did just a fabulous job, not only in his planning, but in his presentation, and what we, if we helped at all, the only thing that we did is, is we gave him a sense of, what are the nuggets that we want you to slow down on for the school board and share more information, and what are those nuggets that, you know, we just want to see in summary? But, and I would open the floor to either Director Milner or, or Chair Tate on that.
Yeah, I think he did a fantastic job, and I believe he's on the, on the, he's going to present at the work session in May, I believe that's what we had talked about before, don't quote me on that, but, yeah, so the rest of the board will hear the 10-year projection and with focus on the next, really this summer, because a lot of this work that we heard about is being done this summer, so that people are going to come back, staff will come back, students will come back, to a whole new, exciting environment in a lot of places, new paint, new, you know, carpets, new stuff like that, so. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, moving on to the NAIPAC committee, or, yeah, sorry, NAIPAC committee update with Director Brunz.
Yeah, I want to address that there are a lot of things in the agenda that I take notes on, but I really want to touch on maybe five, and, and at some points, they may not feel connected, while this took place in the course of the meeting. It was really awesome to see every single elementary principal represented there, and John Johnson from the Perry Island Indian Community was there as well, and had a very open and explicit conversation about collaboration and partnership, and John Johnson invited them down for the bison birthing, or just anything, come down during workshop week, make that an intentional event, but it's hard to introduce it in your classroom and spaces if you don't feel that connection, and you're always invited, and trying to foster that relationship, and then bridging those experiences for students as well, because all of that is as well, because all of that is fantastic learning. So that was an, an active conversation that took place in a very safe environment and everyone was into it. Now, as anyone knows, especially in education or just planning life in general, the intentionality behind next steps and moving those forward. So there's a lot of work that they want to do together and everyone's in the right headspace for it, it just has to happen. At the next NAPAC meeting, so next Thursday, we will do strategic work around the strategic plan, so intentionally giving it time and space as a way where maybe there are those lapses in our community collaboration where we're, we have this one venue, this one night, this one time, but here we have a collection of folks with a, with a shared interest and vision and they can kind of speak to it from their lens. And as they've shared before, and I think it's a collective wisdom, is that what's good for folks who are struggling, if those folks are, are brown or just different from us and have different needs to make sure that they succeed, it's really good for everyone because it's such a strategic way of thinking with those resources. So they'll have time to put their voice into that strategic plan and I'll bring that feedback in that timely manner by that work, next work session that we have. I did attach Ms. Alyssa Cherry's report that she gives us at that meeting, not as like a, what are you doing? But there's a reason she was an employee of the semester. They're busy. They are everywhere. And I would say that this is a reduced amount of reporting out to NAPAC that she provided because there are some things that are very static that she felt, I'm not going to report on that every single time. But they, they are doing a tremendous amount of work and they are a valuable asset to our district and to our community at large. So tremendous work there. There's a reason they won that award. They did pose two questions for the Policy Committee, or they could already be answered and it could be born of my ignorance, so feel free to jump in at any time with these two questions. At what age can a student self-identify as Native American? As they're going around to make sure that students are appropriately identified in our student information system. There is trauma historically from parents, grandparents, where they don't want that identification to take place because of what has happened in the past to be identified as such. So at what age could they make that declaration if they know? And then question two, is there a way in the student information system or Infinite Campus that when a student is designated or they're making a designation for race or ethnicity, but nothing is provided, that there's a way to code it unidentified? I believe the default is white Caucasian. I think, but I'm not going to speak with an expert hat on on that. But then that would make it possible to run a report within the system, find those students and then work diligently to have an accurate representation of what that count is and what supports would be available. So those are questions that they had that came out of that meeting. Again, they're shifting their focus to how to better support their students within the school setting and they've, they've parsed off a subcommittee when it comes to events, but absolutely get to the, the graduate honoring ceremony. It's going to be amazing. At the high schools, it was great last year. I have it down as May 6th. I hope I'm saying that right, because calendars just roll and roll and I want to say 5th, but I know 5th was last year because the calendar shifts the way it does. But those two things for the Policy Committee and they're working very hard. So when you see Ms. Cherry around, give her a big slap on the back because she's doing really good work.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? All right. Next up, we've got the Student School Board Committee update again with Director Brunz.
He's back. We're really excited that we're nearing the final phase of having our, our newest seated members. We came to the decision as a board that those that are serving as juniors, should they have applied, they would automatically be seated as serving seniors to honor some scholarships that are available to them as a part of that process. That leaves us with five applicants to interview those applicant, those interviews will take place next Tuesday from 8:30 to 11:30 at Hastings High School. You excited?
I'm excited.
It's going to be great. It was a great process last year. Mr. Doran has been a valuable member of that process as well. And then we will meet and then bring those recommendations for you, just so you know, you can hyperlink to our interview guide. We do use a scoring system, so we score the answers that we get. And then you're just able to put them in a rank. So we really do try and eliminate our, our bias, whether that's time and distance between when we've interviewed someone, if they're the first one, maybe you forgot them as you go, or they happen to be days apart. But we really do try and get to the, to the best candidates possible. We're really excited to enter those folks in and have those names come forward by the board session at the end of May.
All right, thank you. Looking forward to it. Any questions or comments? Okay. And finally, we have, no. Finally, we have a Policy Committee update with Vice Chair Dressley.
So I'm going to go through briefly just some of the updates from our Policy Committee meetings. We had two Policy Committee meetings this month. We are bringing forward six policies for first reading, but I want to touch on a couple of these that are unique. We have on an individual action item tonight, 902.1, and it's the community facility, use of facilities. And the reason that this is on the agenda as an individual action item is because there hasn't been a change in the facility rental rates in 10 years. Or more. Community education. Carrie Gore and Kim Sell did an amazing job of going out and getting different districts, how much they're charging. And in comparison, we were losing for the same event. We were charging $5,000 that another school district was charging $33,000. So we've got it into the system now to where this is going to be updated every three years, be looked at every year. So these price increases won't be so dramatic in the future. And it still is not impacting our local, our school organizations or district organizations are still going to be no charge to them for the use of the school facilities. So it's only other groups that are outside groups that are coming to use our facilities that there'll be, there will be a change in their rates. Did I miss anything? I was just going to make in the comment, there were some instances where what we were charging wasn't actually keeping up with just janitorial staff and, and things. So we were actually losing some money. So that also helps correct that issue as well.
With this change, does it take effect immediately then?
July 1st.
Is there anybody that's booked past July 1st that should be notified that there's changes coming? Like, do you know what I'm saying? Or would they be grandfathered in?
There's one that I'm aware of and they did reach out to them and have a conversation. So yes, but I'll double check.
Any other questions? So the next one is, that I'm going to talk about is we have second reading, 413 harassment and violence. And this one I had missed. I had missed the updates to Section 4. So there was some language that needed to be removed from Section 4. And then there was also B and C needed to be added. So I apologize for that during the first reading. I missed those, that section there. We have a couple forms and procedures that are on the consent agenda. There are 206.1, I'm not going to talk about it because we already did during our work session and the changes were made according to what we discussed at the work session. 406.1, the Consent to Release Data Form. It's an administrative form, so that's just going to go through as one reading consent agenda. And I do have to apologize, 522.1 was not on the agenda until just this evening. Instead, there was 521.1. So that's been corrected and it's an administrative form, so it just can go through in one reading. The committee, does anybody got any questions on any of those? So the committees continues to work through the 600 series of policies and that's our education program policies with the Director of Teaching and Learning. And these will come to the board over the next couple of months. As a reminder, the legislative session ends in May and we anticipate that all those legislative changes will come from MSBA probably late June. Because we don't have a meeting, committee meeting in late June, I anticipate those to come to the board in July after our committee meeting in July. So everybody's got that on front of mind. If there's no other questions, I'll just go through the first readings real quick. Okay. First readings, 422, Policies Incorporated by Reference. These are policies or these are, this is a policy that states that certain policies apply to both students and employees and the same goes for policy 523. They're MSBA model policies and we're just recommending adoption of them, obviously not tonight, but this is the first reading of them tonight. 522, Sex Nondiscrimination Policy, and this is just updated to reflect the model policy. There's one notable change in the revisions is that there's an addition of an alternate Title IX Coordinator. Any questions about that? 607, 609 and 611, or I'll go ahead and read them. 607, Organization of Grade Levels, 609, Religion and Cultural Observances and 611, Homeschooling were updated to reflect model policy, except for there's additions in what's written in the summary there. So those are the individual change that were made that are outside of the MSBA model policy updates. Any questions on those? Okay, then I'm done.
All right. So next up, we have our action items and first up, we have our consent agenda. So I'm looking for a motion on this item.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
All right. Can I get a second?
Milner, second.
All right. Any discussion on anything in the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to approve the consent agenda. Next, we are moving on to the individual action items. First is policy 902 dot one PR, Community Use of Facilities. And the reason that we had this separated was just because of the significant changes that were made in the fees that are being charged. Vice Chair Dressley already mentioned them. Are there, is there any further discussion needed? All right. Can I get a motion on this item then?
I make a motion to approve that, that item and it's long, it's long due.
I second that.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving 902 dot one or point one PR, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to approve 902 point one PR. Next is the, we have, I need a motion to rescind the resolution that was adopted earlier this year.
Brunz will make the motion to rescind the resolution establishing combined polling places for the 2026 elections, which was approved during the January 6th, 2025 organizational meeting due to error.
Thank you.
Dressley, seconds.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to rescind the resolution that was passed earlier this year. Next up, we have a resolution establishing combined polling places. I recommend doing it while we waive the reading, of course.
I, I recommend the approval and waive the reading. Zuzik.
Milner, second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, sorry. Oh, roll call vote on a resolution. I apologize. We need a roll call vote. Clerk Milner.
Director Zuzik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dressley.
Aye.
Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Brunz.
Aye.
Director Milner, aye.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Next up, we have a resolution to accept donations. Clerk Milner, could I have you read this?
I, Clerk Milner, introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas school board policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts and donations to the district, whereas Minnesota statute, Section 465.03 states that the school board may accept a gift, grant or device of real or personal property in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor, only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. And whereas the referenced donations in the District 200 donations report from July... Ooh, that's old. Hang on. I said the, I printed the wrong one. I apologize. Hang on. It's on the board. Yep. January, sorry, January 2025 to March 2025 have been generously donated. I need a second.
Dressley, seconds.
Vice Chair Dressley duly second in the motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution. So voting in favor of the resolution. Roll call vote. Director Zuzik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dressley.
Aye.
Chair Tate.
Aye.
Director Brunz.
Aye.
And Director Milner, aye. Therefore, be it resolved by the Hastings Public School District School Board to gratefully accept these gifts.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
For folks who have not seen this number, it is over $121,000 that our community has generously donated to the district. So obviously we thank everyone for their generosity on this. Next on our agenda, seniors will be excited. It's too bad our two senior representatives aren't here. We are looking for a motion to approve their last day to be moved up to May 30th.
I make a motion to approve for the last day of school for 12th grade to be May 30th, 2025.
Get a second.
Milner, second.
Any discussion? Of course not. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to have May 30th be their last day of school. All right. And next we have a marching band trip request to Colorado.
Make a motion to approve the marching band request for the trip to Colorado and with an expression of appreciation for the affordability of that trip.
Yes. Can I get a second?
Second. Second, Dressley.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the band trip to Colorado, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to approve the band trip. Next up, I'm looking for a motion on the budget adjustments that were presented earlier this evening.
I make a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 budget adjustment as presented.
Zuzik, seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Mark, did you vote?
I, I voted aye.
Okay. I didn't see you. That's all right. Okay. No worries. All right. Motion passes unanimously to approve the budget adjustments as presented. And finally, for a vote, we have our Tahoe contract for 2526. Can I get a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 Tahoe contract renewal as presented.
Get a second, please.
Brunz will second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. My motion passes unanimously to approve the 2025, 26 Tahoe contract renewal. Next up, oh no, I don't have a, I don't have a link. That's okay. I'm, I'm...
Well, you're looking for that. So I just want to mention that there's one policy that's getting sent back to committee. It's policy 704 and it's because there is, there was a missed 25,000 to 50,000 that needs to be corrected. So you guys will see that next month.
All right. Thank you. I have my thing up now. So our, so we are going into a very exciting time. To remind folks, our superintendent search is underway. We will be receiving, the board will receiving visibility to the applications tomorrow. I received an email from Barb Doran that we had 25 people apply for the position. So that's amazing. And I, I, looking back, we had 13 apply two years ago. So that's phenomenal. Lots of reading for us to do over the next few days, but exciting. So on the 29th, we have a special meeting and that will be with Barb Doran right here at 6:00 PM in the media center in the middle school. The Policy Committee is meeting on May 2nd at noon in the district office. Then we have our first round of superintendent interviews are being held on May 6th at 8:00 AM in the district office. These are open to the public, just so folks are aware, you can come and attend and listen if you'd like to. And then we will be having a special, a quick seating for new board member Elaine Michael Mulder, little 10-minute quick seating for her on May 13th at 1:50 PM, which will then move into 2:00 PM, second round of interviews for our superintendent. On May 14th, we have 5:30 PM meeting of the Student School Board Committee in the district office as well. And then our next work session is on May 14th as well at 6:00 PM. That's what I've got for future meetings. The other question that was brought up earlier this evening was direction regarding having a closed session. So the conversation that we had had was we may want to wait to have our closed parameters meeting until after the legislature, legislative session ends, just because we are working on contracts that are out two years. And the legislative session ends, so just that we have a bit of a pulse on what the future looks like regarding funding coming from the state. So I believe the legislative... So I believe legislative session ends on the 16th, am I correct, May 16th, correct? So we would be looking at at possibly having closed parameters meetings or a closed parameters meeting after that. So do we want to have Ms. Humble send out a Google something for the end of May to see what folks are, what availability is? Or Director Suzik?
Can I comment that I I just strongly oppose waiting to have that parameters meeting? Because that means we can't even get started on teacher negotiations. And and one of the most important things in any negotiation is trust. And we know that our teachers profoundly trust Dr. Champa. And I think that we should do what we can to get it done quickly. And frankly, never before have we known the financial parameters of of the two year biennium as well as we have this year. We've never known it this much because it's in statute still. And if there's a change, it doesn't start until 2027. So I I just, I am, I am very deeply opposed to waiting for the parameters meeting. I think that we should have it yesterday. I think that we should move forward with teacher negotiations as quickly as possible and lean into the trust that our teachers have with Dr. Champa. So I'm, I'm stating my strong opinion.
Okay, I guess the reason that it was suggested is because of the frankly, abysmal outlook on state funding coming towards public education. And I don't think that in the past, I've had this kind of a this much of a negative sense for what our future looks like, coming from the state funding aspect of it. So I guess that's why the suggestion was made. And maybe that hasn't happened before, but I can say that I I haven't felt this this concerned about what's going to happen with both state and federal funding, frankly, at this point in the year.
And again, I I come to this with the perspective of 25 years of school leadership. I've never before we, I have, we have never known before what the two year biennium would look like ahead of time. And oftentimes, we find out like in June or July, we actually know how much money we're going to get for the next two years. We know that. So to delay the decision because of uncertainty is it. Right now, we know exactly how much money we're going to get next year and the subsequent year. That's the two year biennium. And we don't know what happens after that. Right, we don't know what happens in 27, 28, but we do know what happens in the next two years. And and so for us to to, I think the the worst possible thing for a new superintendent to walk into is for her to walk into negotiating. Her or him, pardon me, her or him. Thank you. To to walk in and try to establish trust quickly. And those negotiations are so much more arduous and contentious than what we could have right now. And and I I think that our teachers well understand the economic situation because they know what we know right now. And and I I'm just, and and I, you know, I'm not sure what happens 27 out. Not at a federal level, not at a state level. But I do know what happens for the next two years. And I've never known that in April. Nobody at this table has ever known this in April. And so for us to say, gosh, we don't know what's going to happen and so we should delay. I I think that's, I think that that's that's just not accurate. I mean, we know exactly how much money we're going to get for the next two years.
But the the problem is the compounding, right? Because because obviously, when you, when you say what percentage raises you're approving over the next two years, that is what is going to be used as the baseline for two years from now. And I guess my my question to you is, and I, you know, I don't know the answer. Has the state ever been looking, looking at a deficit like they are at this point? I I just, I'm just curious, like when it's
Yeah, this is a
within two years, within three years, whatever.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there's been horribly dark projections in the past from the, from the state for for the year that's about to come. I mean, and and we really had no idea. And then if we had no idea what was going to happen in the next two years, then then I'd say, yeah, let's slow the roll. But what I don't want to do is saddle the next superintendent with negotiating with the largest employee group that we have. And 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 frankly, to your point, at that parameters meeting, one of the things we'll talk about is sustainability. And so sustainability will be one of the things that might be a limiting factor on the negotiations or on on our parameters for negotiations. But but for us to say, we don't know what's going to happen, that's actually the exact opposite. For the first time ever, we know exactly what's going to happen in the biennium.
But I I think my, where my concern comes from is that I don't think I've, I don't think I've heard of there being so much of a target on the back of public education.
Yes, there absolutely has. Absolutely. During the Palenta years, it was every gosh darn year. And I don't mean to make that a political statement, that that's just a truism. Governor Carlson had some very tough years. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. This has happened in the past. There are dark bienniums and bright bienniums. But but I I've made my point and and I, I, I think that it would be foolish for us not to take advantage of Tammy's trust with the the teacher bargaining group. And 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 that that would be, that that would be an unsolvable problem for us going into a new superintendent. And it's not fair to him or her.
And I agree with you. I I think it is imperative that the the negotiations start as soon as possible. Like I said, I'm just nervous about that param, how how comfortable we're going to be make with, be with making a decision on what the parameters are for all of those contracts at that time.
The single biggest limiting force on the parameters is what happens 27 out. And that's one of the things that Director Suber can help us to understand. And our own understanding of what's happening at the Capitol will inform that decision. But but again, we're making decisions and we know 95% of what we need to know. We don't know what happens 27 out, but we absolutely know what happens prior to that. And and I think that we have the bulk of the material that we need to know to make those decisions. And I, and I just think it's unfair to a new superintendent to walk in and have to negotiate a contract. That that's, that's not a, that's not a good way to start a leader's role.
Did you want to say something, Director?
Yeah, if if it might help to give some clarification about the process that we're looking at. We, our initial meeting for the closed session parameters is intended to be more of an informational meeting to give you the base data. And then what our intent would be to go do a first meeting with teachers and then come back to do the second meeting and give you more of the recommendation. So by the time we get to that recommendation meeting, you'd be past May 16th, but at least we would have been able to get you base information that here's the groups we're working on, here's the base information about them. We would then like to do a first meeting with teachers so we understand what's kind of on their thoughts. And then the next meeting, we would be bringing you more details, more budget information. And we would probably be giving you, like we did last round, multiple options and recommendations to choose from. The piece I think that's important for you to know is that our teachers are willing to try to get this done and we are willing to put the work and the hours in to get it done so that it is settled before Tammy is gone. It's going to be a lot of work, but both sides are willing to put the time and effort in to get it, get it taken care of, hopefully before Tammy goes.
Thank you for that information. That solves my concern completely. Appreciate that. Okay, so with that, Lindy had sent out some options. Did you get responses from folks to say that those are out of?
I was like, there's 17 meetings this month, I'm not even responding.
I understand that sentiment. Otherwise, we can leave those, leave those stands, see where we sit, and then we can come up with additional dates if we need to. Okay. Was there any date, do we at least have some dates that are still open for everyone or not? And they were all next week, I believe, right? Okay. The next two weeks.
May 7th, I'm gone. No, no, I'm not.
I'm gone next morning.
Okay. All right, so we'll see where we land in the next two weeks with options for that additional meeting. So that would be an additional closed meeting for the board.
And I would say, given where we're at right now, May 1st is too quick.
Okay, we're getting a new list. Okay, so there will be a closed meeting added at some point over the next, we'll call it three weeks. To kick that off. Okay, so anyway, those are the future meetings that we've got. Okay, okay. All right, finally, looking for a motion to adjourn then.
Motion to adjourn.
Second address, Lee.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye, all those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously to adjourn at 8:09 PM.